Well, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, thank you for making it out tonight. Very grateful all of you could spend at least part of your evening with us here tonight. I'm going to call to order the Monday, November 13, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Hunt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Over the past week, we observed two of the everlasting foundations of our country, Veterans Day and Elections Day. On Saturday, we paid tribute to the brave men and women who have selflessly served our nation, defending the ideals and principles that make our country great. We reflected on their sacrifices and expressed our deepest gratitude for their unwavering commitment to freedom. They have fought to protect all that we hold dear, including our fundamental right to vote, the very essence of our democracy, ensuring that each citizen has the right to have a say in the direction of our country, state, and local government. We must recognize that the right to vote is a precious gift, one that has been secured through the acts of those who have served. It is our duty to exercise this right and to participate actively in the process that our veterans have fought so hard to preserve. Our country thrives when its citizens engage in casting their votes to shape the future of our nation, national and local governments. It is not only a privilege but a responsibility that we must take seriously. By doing so, we contribute to the continued strength and vitality of our democracy. In the face of challenges and uncertainty, we must remember that our democracy is resilient and that it works, but it requires our active participation to endure. Our veterans have given us the gift of freedom. It is our duty to protect and preserve it, not only by words, but also in deeds, by fulfilling our civic duty. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt, for an excellent proclamation. All right. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation honoring the Royal Oak Lions Club 95th anniversary. So I'm going to come down, and I think I'm going to be a little bit more stage-right or stage-left on the mic down there due to an operating issue. And I'd welcome the Lions Club to come meet me down here.
Stage-right.
Stage-right?
Thank you.
I mean, I got to defer to my one-time, once-producer.
Director.
Director? Yeah. Here, we'll all gather around here.
Thank you.
All right. I wish that one was working. All right. See, I should have been a stagehand, Commissioner Douglas. All right. It really is an honor to read this proclamation. 95 years of continued service to our community. I know in a challenging world today, our city especially relies on the hearts and love of all of our volunteers, and I know the Lions Club has been doing great work for 95 years. We see it in action every day, and we're so grateful for each of you and the work that you do. So this is a proclamation honoring the Royal Oak Lions Club 95th anniversary. Whereas the Royal Oak Lions Club is a member of the Lions Club International, the world's largest service club organization with 1.4 million members and 46,000 clubs in more than 200 countries and geographical areas. And whereas Royal Oak Lions Club was founded in 1928 and is celebrating 95 years of humanitarian service. And whereas the Royal Oak Lions Club is comprised of volunteers who dedicate their time to the betterment of our communities and aiding those in need. And whereas the Royal Oak Lions Club has been a champion in helping combat vision impairment and blindness, with this same conviction, Lions have also been a force in providing medical care and education to help prevent hearing loss. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission, on behalf of the entire Royal Oak community and in recognition of this important anniversary, hereby extend our congratulations to the Royal Oak Lions Club on their 95th anniversary. Thank you.
I just want to say, in spirit, many of you knew Peggy Lewis, and he was a member of the Royal Oak Lions Club. He was a former mayor of Royal Oak for over 50 years, so I know he's looking down and really appreciating this. To move forward, you know, we do a lot of wonderful things with people that have eye issues. We also collect glasses, and if you go to Hollywood Market, Holiday Market, the library, your eye doctor, if you want to just drop off your glasses, we collect them. We just collected 200 and some the other day. So thank you very much, and we really appreciate this.
The next item on tonight's agenda is a presentation of the animal shelter update. I believe we have Ms. Ellison here, our animal shelter manager extraordinaire.
Thank you.
And at this point, I will hand it over to either Ms. Ellison or Mr. Fenton.
We're going to do a very brief overview of where the proposed new shelter project is as it stands today. I'll walk you through the technical, how we got here and where we're at right now, and then Ms. Ellison can walk you through the schematic design that she's done with Krieger Klatt for this new facility and explain some of the rationale for why she's made those changes. So in 2021, the police department was approached by Champion Hargrave's Chevrolet, owners of a warehouse located at 2005 Bel Air, to discuss a potential property swap. So the existing 2,100-square-foot animal shelter would be relocated to half of that Bel Air building, which is approximately 5,000 square feet. There would be no acquisition cost for the city, and once the build-out of the new shelter would be complete, the current animal shelter would be demolished by the owner, Matthew Hargrave's Chevrolet, and added to their parcel. And here's a visual to show you where exactly these parcels are in proximity. The small pause in the gray, that's the current animal shelter. The large pause in the orange is the Bel Air facility, and then you can see where the Chevrolet dealership is and why for them it would be advantageous to have that parcel as part of their portfolio as well. 2022, the city spent a lot of its time conducting financial due diligence on this project. We did not have this budgeted. It was not part of our capital improvement projects, and so we applied for a federal grant for the build-out of this facility, and it was awarded in 2023 by HUD in the amount of $1.1 million. Also, in 2022, voters approved the Parks and Animal Shelter Village, and that is approximately $133,000 for shelter operations only, and so the build-out of this facility is completely separate from the operation. Also, in 2023, the City Commission allocated $200,000 using our ARPA dollars for soft-cost funding for the build-out of the new shelter. We've awarded some of that work with engineering and schematic design. This would be a lead silver building consistent with the city's Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and we're currently doing a lot of that work as we speak. We began work on a purchase agreement between March and July of this year, and that was concurrent to community development, conducting reviews of the plans as they were being drawn. And frankly, the creation of two separate distinct property parcel IDs has presented complications that we did not see at the outset. These challenges relate to the physical separation itself and building code issues related to firewalls and how you actually uniquely make one building two very distinct parcels and pieces of property, as well as many utility considerations and overall egress-to-the-site. That has caused, and it is causing, further revisions to the proposed shelter design, but we're working on those. For that reason, we ceased work on the development agreement since most of these entitlement issues could not be rectified in a development agreement, and so the idea was to pivot, work through the entitlement process, work with Community Development, Planning Commission, ZBA, receive those approvals first, and then a development agreement is really just boilerplate at that point. And so that is where we're at right now, and I will have Jody share on where she is at with the actual design and operations of the proposed new shelter.
Thank you for having us tonight. As many of you know, you've been to the building, the existing building, and you've seen the state, you've seen the layout. The building itself is approximately 70 years old, built in the '50s to be the pound, intake of stray animals where they were held for a few days and then dispatched if they were not claimed. Sheltering has come a long way since then. We are hoping that it continues to progress in a more positive way into the future. One of the things -- go ahead, Todd, if you want to. Okay. You can see the general layout there. On the bottom of the screen, if you were looking at the front of the building, that would be to the left of the screen, to the bottom or the east side of the building would be the dog area. Now, at the back of the dog area, we have a space, something we do not have right now, a place where animal control or the police could bring in strays, take them straight back that hallway into a quarantine area, so that if we get an animal that is unwell or maybe just needs to distress, which is a lot of them just need time to decompress when they come into a facility like this, it's a big change from their home, they can go directly into a quarantine area where they can be held for a few days to decompress, and we can also monitor their health and make sure that there's nothing they're going to be taking into the general dog area, which is that entire rectangle on the bottom. In the middle is basically the operations center of the facility. You'll walk in the front door to the reception desk, a much bigger reception area than we have right now, which is a little dark galley that you walk into with a desk to one side and a door in the front. This will be a welcoming reception area. Off to -- as you walk in the building, to your right will be a dog viewing and meeting. We're calling it, I think, Dog Conference, but it's a place for people to come and meet a dog, spend some time, where they can be alone away from the kennel area, and also staff can keep an eye on them from there, from the front. Little further back, I can't remember everything, and I can't see it from here, but we're going into the laundry area, food prep area, which at this point, everything that we have is -- it's very Scandinavian design, where, you know, one room serves about 15 or 20 purposes. We are going to have some special areas where we can do our food prep, and we can potentially have a vet visit if we need a vet visit. If we find a traveling vet who wants to come in, we can have a room where we could bring them. We're going to have laundry area, storage area, which we really don't have right now. To the left or the west side of the building is the cat area. Way up at the front of the building, there's a little square that you can see, which is a cat colony, an open room where the cats can mingle. It's going to be glassed off the lobby so that people can come in and see the cats interacting with each other and watch them. Oh, there we go. Thank you. The reception area, the dog, you can see some of the dog areas there. They'll be able to see some of the cats, plus we'll have the kennel area for the cats, for the ones that maybe don't do so well in a colony or who need to be by themselves or, you know, mothers with kittens, that type of thing. And then behind that, we're actually going to have a cat quarantine area, something we don't have right now. All of our quarantine has to happen at the back of our office on intake. And then storage, there's a utility building or a utility room back there for all of our security and computer equipment, phone equipment, that kind of stuff. Again, something right now, all of that is in the middle of the cat room, just on the wall. Yeah, there's a picture of the reception area, basically what it's going to look like. I think we tweaked some of the colors a little bit, but that's going to be the basic. We'll have the screens up where you can see the animals we have available, see who you'd like to meet. There's the cat area with the colony, the cat kennels, and then the quarantine in the back. Color choices, built-in kennels, dog area again, with the more contemporary, brighter, lighter, area-er areas where they're still going to be separated, and that'll be mainly for staff and volunteers, and then we will bring the animals out to meet people as opposed to making them go into the loud room like we have in the past. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have if I didn't completely lose you on that, you know, dime tour of the new shelter facility.
Questions? Commissioner Macy.
This looks great. I think it looks really, really exciting. It seems like it anticipates kind of a change in how we operate the shelter, too. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, it's going to be very similar. I did have huge plans at the beginning about, you know, flexing into a bigger space where we could have a lot of community events. We're not really going to have the room to do that. We will have smaller spaces available where we could hopefully host some meetings or some trainings, maybe do some smaller clinics, but we'll see. We'll see what happens other than that. The operations themselves are going to be basically the same, except for we will have a nicer forward-facing area where we can bring people in. They will have the room to meet the animals. They're not going to be in the middle of a prep area or, you know, in the middle of a row of kennels trying to have a discussion about a particular animal while everyone else is barking or meowing or patting at them at the same time. And I don't know if that was exactly what you were thinking.
Yeah, sort of that, but also it seems like now it's sort of like more by appointment, and also I think we have more fostering, and this seems like it could accommodate more animals.
Exactly, and that's what we're hoping, actually. What we'd like to do, because again, the future of sheltering, keeping animals in a shelter as a long-term housing situation is not ideal for the animals. We will still be able to bring in, you know, strays, lost dogs, lost cats, and reunite them with their families, but the longer-term ones, it's my hope that we'll be able to work more closely with rescue groups, with hopefully an expanded foster corps, so that we can get the animals in for a shorter period of time, move them into hopefully a home-based foster, so that then we can see how they do in a home with a family, and then place them from there, rather than trying to be everything in the shelter itself. I just, I think it's much better if we become part of a bigger community and collaborative as opposed to proprietary with everything.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Cole.
Maybe I didn't notice, where do the caracal cats go?
Well, we will actually have some kennels now that have tops on them, so I had gotten that call early on, and we couldn't take the caracals when they were out because we had only open kennels and they can climb.
I mean, nor could the zoo, so I guess we're not.
I mean, at this point, they should still be going to the zoo or rescue, but if we had to hold them short-term, we could. We'd have the ability now.
Thank you.
Oh, my.
Might as well open that one, rip that scabbard off. I like it.
Well, my favorite story is the 2021.
Exactly.
Anybody else?
I can wrap it up with the next steps. One more slide, we won't be here more than half an hour. So as I had said, we paused work on the purchase agreement to focus on solving the entitlement issues first. We're continuing. In fact, I received another design set today to review that with Community Development, and we're aiming for approvals from Planning Commission and ZBA in first quarter 2024. That's idealistic, but that's what we're aiming for. If approved, knowing that that's the hard work for the development agreement, I anticipate it would probably take about 60 days to resolve the rest of that development agreement. Once we get there and schematic design is finalized and approved by the City Commission, we'll prepare a final budget, that final purchase agreement, the approval of any construction work that needs to be sent out to bid. The City Commission will have those decisions to make, and hopefully we will receive a groundbreaking in spring/summer 2024. So I think from a high level, you understand where the difficulties are, where we're at right now, but we are all rowing together to try to get this amazing concept into construction.
All right. Nothing else? I'll say, great job on the update.
Thank you.
I know, Ms. Ellison, you've worked exceptionally hard on very little budget and in working conditions in the existing shelter that are not ideal.
Thank you.
You know, they've been that way since, you know, the 1950s, and clearly, you know, the values we embody as a community here and our love of our furry four-legged friends and other friends, too, that may not have four legs. It's great to see, and it was great to do the walkthrough a little bit ago to kind of get a feel for the space and see the vision that you have and that Todd and everybody else working on this project has, to really make sure that we have an asset in the community that will be long-lived, functional, and really, you know, operate to the value system that we embody as a community. This is an animal-loving town, and we all have, a lot of us have cats and dogs, and I know mine have occasionally gotten out, and it's always pretty scary. Thank God for Apple trackers now.
Exactly.
That little gilbert, he can be sneaky sometimes. And, you know, having a place and having that assurance, that little peace of mind, knowing that we have great people, great volunteers, and a great facility to care for our animals, and also for those who, you know, end up there because of whatever circumstance that we can, you know, mitigate the harm to those animals and find a place for them, I think is pretty remarkable, and can't wait to see this take off. And I also think, too, being right there, you know, near Kroger and kind of on a route for people to get there, the way we've, you know, we talked a lot about the inside, but the outside kind of shows to me like, hey, stop here. You know, you got 10 minutes? Walk in. Maybe you'll meet your new best friend.
Exactly. And we wanted to thank you, the staff and the volunteers, and I want to thank all of you for being so supportive, and, you know, we're tenacious. We'll hang on and wait for this to happen. We know it's going to be great, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to item six, which is the November 7, 2023 municipal election city manager -- or election, municipal election city manager, Paul Breit?
So we have to follow.
Your roles change.
Yeah. So good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission. I had two names mentioned there, but I have the privilege of introducing City Clerk Melanie Hallis, who will give us an overview and also give the Commission opportunity to make comments about the election that occurred less than a week ago.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm happy to report that the November 7, 2023 election ran smoothly, and we had a 30.94% turnout. All results are available to view on the county's website at oakgov.com. Being a pilot community for early voting was a success. We had 407 voters who voted at our early voting site, which was open for nine days, eight hours each day. Our early voting site had the third-largest voting turnout in the county. We also had a satellite office onsite located next to the voting area that was staffed so that anyone who wasn't registered to vote and arrived on the site could do so. We also had staff onsite so that if anyone wanted to surrender their absentee ballot and vote at the site that day, they could do so as well. We also had surveys provided for anyone who voted there and wanted to -- we collected some data from that, from age, zip code, because obviously we share the site with Madison Heights, and also just any kind of improvements, if they're going to come back and vote again there, and the responses were extremely positive. And I'd also like to thank Judy Davids for providing that survey for us. We had a very successful day due to the team effort of election workers, my amazing staff, and also IT support.
Wow. Well, I just want to say out of the gate, thank you, Clerk Hallis, and thank you to your staff, your team, and to all the volunteers and to all those who worked on Election Day. It was very, very smooth. It is a tremendously difficult job compounded with external, we'll say, ideologies that make it even harder and harder these days to feel safe and secure when conducting these elections, and a big thanks to you and a big thanks to our PD. I didn't hear of any incidences that were unfavorable in any way whatsoever. The turnout was really, really good from what we can see, and I personally used the early voting because I wanted to check it out and see how it went, and it went so smoothly and so easily that I was like, we're done? This is it? I mean, this was easier than anything I've ever done in my life. And so I think out of the gate, for the first time, getting it right, especially in the early voting, is a pretty outstanding task, and, you know, much gratitude goes to you and your team and all those who worked the elections. And a great thank you to all the Royal Oak voters who showed up to vote in the municipal election. It's often, you know, difficult to get people to pay attention, but they came out in high numbers and let their voice be heard, and their voice was heard loud and clear, and it's really good feedback to have that from the voters and to have their participation, and just grateful to be in a community that, you know, values this core, if not the most essential democratic thing that we do. So thank you, Ms. Hallis.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Hallis? Clerk Hallis? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Which brings us to item seven, which is the approval of the agenda. And I will make a just brief reminder, if anyone wants to add anything to the end of the agenda from closed session, they're free to do that. I see a very confident request from Commissioner Macy.
I'd like to move approval of the agenda with the addition at the end of ratification of the three agreements discussed at closed session related to collective bargaining.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. All right. Next is technically public comment, but before we get to public comment, I think there's something really important that we have to discuss. We have a lot of committed people that work for the city of Royal Oak, and some that are so committed that they would actually spend their birthday with us here tonight. And I would just ask if it's anyone's birthday tonight, if you could stand up and be recognized.
Is it Holly?
It's City Engineer Donahue's birthday tonight, and I made a promise to a certain somebody that we would provide her recognition with a little bit of embarrassment, so we're going to sing "Happy Birthday" to her. So on my lead.
(Singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Holly. Happy birthday to you.
I mean, if engineers like anything more than the spotlight being on them in a room like this, I mean, I couldn't think of a better thing to do. And we are so fortunate to have Ms. Donahue as our city engineer. She's accomplished a lot of things in her 28 years of life, and we're just so grateful for her for being here tonight on her birthday while her family eats cake and celebrates without her. All right. This brings us to public comment. Just a few remarks and ground rules before we start the star of the show here. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, whether or not they're on the agenda tonight. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no worries. You can reach out to us via email or other communication mediums. Please note that the City Commission doesn't typically respond to questions during public comment, however, we will ask those questions when the topic is discussed. If the question is not related to any city issues tonight, we are taking notes, and we do kindly ask if you have contact information to provide it to Ms. Davids in the back, our community engagement specialist, so we can follow up with you with the answer. Our city manager is also taking notes and does look into matters as appropriate. So with that, who's first? Mr. May.
Good evening. John Mayton, Commander of Elmhurst. I'm also president of the Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial. of the Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial. I'd like to thank the city for a great Veterans' Day event, and we were honored to be able to sponsor the coffee and refreshments with the help of local businesses, The Office Coffee Shop with Arts Beats and Eats, and with Giving Thanks Bakery, who provided all the good stuff for us to serve. The memorial at 13 Woodward, you'll see a few things happening. Just some minor updates. Right now, we've got some pedestals that are cement blocks at the bottoms of the flagpoles. In the next, hopefully, month, you will see granite pedestals replacing those with black granite panels on them, so kind of be upgrading that and a few of the other plaques. I also want to thank the city for taking care of that area for us, now that we've dedicated it in August. And other than the avalanche of acorns from the Royal Oaks that we had this fall, I think a record thing all over the bricks. Yeah, it's really been great. We've received nothing but positive feedback on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Can I still buy one of those bricks if I want to?
Yes, you may. Go to our website, www.michiganwtwo memorial.org. We're also accepting other donations as well. And you also could sponsor something like a statue or the 10-foot, 50-foot high, or 10-foot-high, 50-foot-long granite wall, if you would like. There's many things. So, we are looking, you know, we are actively in a campaign now, another camp, a campaign for Phase Two to kind of add on to that. So, we are, you know, looking to get especially corporations involved to do some of that, since this is the statewide recognition for World War II. Thank you.
And for those of you who aren't as familiar with the World War II, Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial, that's going to be here at Memorial Park. It really is going to be a treasure. John and Deb and everybody else that have been working on it, it's really a good story, telling one of the most remarkable stories in American history. So, I highly encourage you to educate yourself on it, and really, if you can find a way to contribute, please do so. If you can find a way to support and help, please do so as well. A lot of great people out there working on it to really talk about a really important topic of American history and honor those appropriately. So, and thank you, John, to you and your team. All right. Who's next? Going once? Is that Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought there'd be more people. Regarding Agenda Number 11, the YMCA Community Center, proposed as a seven-story building with four floors of housing, including affordable housing. Currently, there are 155 parking spaces versus the 163 proposed. The existing surface parking that includes 25 spaces for the senior high-rise. The new parking structure will additionally serve the community center and possibly the residence. The drawings are not clear as to whether there will be parking on the residential floors. Recognize that natural ventilation will not be possible if the residential units are on the exterior shown. The surface lot is critical for the south end of downtown, south end downtown businesses, per the Rich Associates Parking Study Report prepared prior to the purchase of that Sixth and Main property. Additionally, it provides an alternative for those who will not park in a structure. Surface parking is preferred by many downtown business patrons. The Lafayette structure is heavily utilized now that the Baker College Building is operational. I had to park way up on the top floor one evening. The Rich Associate Parking Study should be updated to reflect the current business profile downtown. The study should also include the impact of demolishing the original Center Street parking structure, as some of you have proposed. Perhaps you can locate the YMCA Community Center there. Regarding the nondisclosure agreement, the citizens have a right to know the following: what the city will gain from the property sale, or will it be given to the YMCA, like Ron Boji, plus $5 million that he subsequently gave to charity. John Witz did a similar thing with the DDA, $150,000. If you're going to give money to charity, just give money to charity. Don't give it to the developers. What is, what will the city lose in parking revenue? And finally, what are the other associated costs to the city for loss of use? For instance, I understand Arts Beats N Eats wants $50,000 because they'd be displaced from the Sixth Street Lot. And then, of course, the MSPs, loss of revenue and fines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Who's next? I see Mr. Ashley with his hand in the back.
Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor. I happen to live across the street from that parking lot, future YMCA. I have, right now, currently about 25 people. I have more residents moving in with cars, so probably within a short time, I'll be up to 30. I have no place to put them. With the, with the seven-story apartment complex across from me, that's on between Sixth and Seventh on Williams, they will have underground parking, but their visitors are going to be parking all over William Street, Seventh Street, and Troy. They can't park on Sixth between Williams and Troy because that's the fire department there. So where am I going to put 25 people, or 30 people, or 35 people? I have no place to put them. I think there's this commission in this city thinks seniors should not be driving. And that is my feeling about this city. You people, if it's flat buildup, no consequences to the people around it. Yes, you're going to put the YMCA. I have people thinking, well, that's a great deal of putting people across there. You only have three left flat parking spa, parking lots. The one behind Salvation Army, which has no lights. The one across over there, across the street, had barely any lights on it. And the one behind 526. That's it for flat parking. Buffalo Wild Wings gets three-quarters of that parking lot that you're going to go for the YMCA. That's where their customers parks. That's where the pizza place over there, their people park. They're not going to park in parking garages. You people have known that, but you still believe people will park in parking garages. Young people will not park up there. Young women will not park in downtown Royal Oak. You will drive out Buffalo Wild Wings, Hop Cat, maybe Bandit, maybe other bars and restaurants that contribute to, with taxes and whatsoever to this city. When that goes up, if it goes up, it's a detriment to this city. And I think you people should look at that. In my last 42 seconds, I'd like to make a recommendation to this City Commission. Pat Perush, who has passed away, spent half her life working for the city, not only in this building, but in the old one. I think you should name this part of this building, Pat Perush Hall, in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right. Who's next? Ms. Wagman?
Good evening. Janice Wagman. I'm going to echo what you said about the election, the city clerk's office. I worked the pre-election, and I worked on Election Day. And as a worker, what they did made everything run smoothly. So, thank you very much. It was, it was excellent. I appreciate it. I also want to thank Judy Davids for her presentation at the Royal Oak Historical Museum regarding the people on the Veterans Memorial. It was very touching, and the people that were there really enjoyed it. She did put a lot of work into it. You could tell from the video and her speech, so I want to thank her, too. Regarding the YMCA, love the concept. When we did the survey for ARPA, something--
Somebody's phone went off.
Oh, okay. When we did the survey for ARPA, the residents, way up on the list, and you two, wanted a community center. So, it checks that bill. We want affordable housing. It checks that bill. But the location is really not in the interest of the downtown and a lot of the people. As has been mentioned, the Rich and Associates Study did an inventory of how many of those spaces are used in different time periods. One on two of the time periods where it's the most busy. If you total up how much parking spaces you've lost at OCC plus in that lot, you'll be 100, and then deduct what's available in the other two surface lots that are close to there. You'll be 185 spaces short in one timeframe on Saturday, and 150 spaces short in another timeframe. That's, that's a lot. If you, if you put one or two people in each car, you're talking like 300 customers, 370 customers that support those downtown businesses, and I'm really concerned for their survival. And the 25 spaces that Mr. Ashley mentioned, they can't walk to a parking structure. Those lots have handicap spaces in them. If you take those down, then you've also eliminated handicap parking. In that whole stretch, there's hardly any. There's none, none on-street, which, by the way, I still want. So, it'll be the handicap spaces, the seniors, plus the revenue from the parking, and the penalties from MPS. That contract isn't over until 2027. If we start next year, after a year, you're going to have at least a year and a half or so of that contract where you're going to have penalties. And I imagine they're going to be pretty big. So, love the concept. I just don't like the location. If there's anyplace else we can put it, I think we should really look into it. Also, as I've mentioned two other times, and I'm going to mention it again, only two of you have ethics forms filed with the city manager's office, current ethics forms filed with the city manager's office. You're required to by ordinance, and I would appreciate you submitting those as you're required to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagman. All right. Who's next? Mr. Fisher?
Good evening. I'd like to start by congratulating those of you who won reelection this past week. Thank you for your service to the city. I didn't even know the YMCA thing was going to be on here, but I fully support the YMCA. You can get yourself clean. You can have a good meal. You can do whatever you feel. So, I want everybody to get on board, come hang out with all the boys. Real reasons I came is first, my building, 310 South Washington, I believe it turns 100 years old in 2026. And I know people of certain interests would not want to see it this way for financial reasons, but I believe that building should be marked as a historical building. It's post-World War I, but before World War II. It was likely inhabited by those who came to Detroit to find work in auto factories. With more research, I'm sure a lot of interesting stories go through that building based on its location, a four-story building outside of Detroit in 1926. The other thing I wanted to talk about is I was hoping you guys would create a new position within the city, hopefully for me, but, but regardless of who it is, I think we should have someone, I don't know who, whose authority this falls in under right now, probably IT, but I think we should probably have somebody who's specific for AI and search. Make sure that everything in our city, not just our city stuff, but all of the businesses and other organizations are also easily interfaced with via popular platforms, you know, it'd be like, you know, down to the level where I can say, Alexa, when is the next City Commission meeting? Those kind of things. I think we should plan for the future, and I think that's how people are going to start interfacing with things. I always use Talk to Text now, so I make a lot of typos. But yeah, that would be a great thing for the city. Also, we could work with companies when we know there's things that are wrong. For example, I do Rideshare, and it's always telling me to turn from southbound Woodward onto the Service Drive, where I don't think you're supposed to make a turn there. I think you're supposed to go around and do the hook, but a lot of the apps tell you to do that. And speaking from experience, sometimes you wind up a long way from your home neighborhood and know how the streets are, so you're going to default to the map. That could cause a dangerous situation. So, just an idea I had and wanted to share with you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment this evening? Going once? Going twice? All right. We're going to bring the meeting back to this side of the table, which brings us to item nine, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening? Commissioner Macy?
Item D.
Item D. Okay. Anybody else? All right. So, the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the exception of item D, which we'll talk about immediately following the vote on the consent agenda. Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval?
We have a, a motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion on the consent agenda. Yes, Commissioner Colo.
I just want to congratulate the library on the waterproofing of the basement. That room was quickly headed to becoming a new indoor pool, I think, for the community, so this is quite a win.
Very good. All right. Any other discussion? All right. I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right. Item D. I'll hand it over to Commissioner Macy, since she was the interim commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, I just pulled it off. The last time this item was in front of us, we had a discussion about it. It's a back and forth. It didn't seem like it was quite right, a consent agenda, especially if there are some like me who plan to vote negatively on it. So, I didn't know if we wanted to open the discussion up and have a presentation, or how we want to do it, or just want to call for the vote. That's fine with me, too.
Sure. I mean, I think the public deserves to learn a little bit more about it. I think it must have been, you know, incidental that it was on the consent. But we do have Chief Moore here. Chief Moore, do you mind? I know you gave a presentation last time we had this in front of us. Perhaps you can maybe present again with some of the highlights since our last discussion, and we can take it from there.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Tonight, before you, you have a request to purchase 10 Flock Automatic License Plate Recognition Cameras for a period of 24 months. Year one of this contract includes the cost of each camera plus a one-time implementation fee totaling $40,500, and the reoccurring costs beginning at year two are $30,000. So, the total cost of this two-year contract is $70,500. As mentioned, I did the formal presentation back on October 9. Nothing has changed since that original presentation, but I'm happy to take questions this evening or go into further in-depth discussion, if you'd like. And I'd also like to point out that tonight in the audience, Amy Cornell is here, and she is from Flock Safety. She's the Community Engagement Manager, and she is also ready to take questions tonight, if you wish to do that as well.
All right. Any questions for Chief Moore? Okay. All right. Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, Chief, I'll ask you the same question I asked in closed session. I did have a concern about the contract language. I know it's been 25 minutes, maybe an hour now, since we first talked about this. So, I was wondering if we have any more insight into if Flock would amend the contract or provide insight to the contract to give us insight to limiting the use of this data outside of law enforcement personnel.
I didn't have an, I didn't have the opportunity to get that exact question answered, but if you'd like to pose that question to Amy, she could come to the front and try to discuss that portion, if you'd like.
Come on down. Not as exciting as Rod Roddy, but the invite's still there.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to--
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Amy Cornell. As Chief mentioned, I'm a Community Engagement Manager with Flock Safety. Happy to answer any questions. Wanted to make sure I'm understanding the specific concern before I answer, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that somewhere in the contract, there is language that states that the data can only be used by a law enforcement agency and not any of the other partners that you might have.
Yes, yes, that's correct. And if that isn't stated in the contract, we can certainly amend that because that is the practice of Flock Safety. So the data would be owned by the police department, and nobody else would have access to that data.
So any of your other partners, if they were to access it, they would have to go through a law enforcement agency? And you're okay with if our city attorney drafts language and makes sure that that's in the contract, that that's something you guys all would be amenable to?
Yes, so typically what I would recommend is having the city attorney have a conversation with our attorney to make sure that that's the approved language and language that you're comfortable with.
Commissioner Hunt?
I just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly. You said the police department owns the data, but it's maintained by Flock software. Is that right?
So the data is completely owned, you're correct, is completely owned by the police department. The physical equipment is owned by Flock, so it's kind of a lease model, but it's a software-as-a-service model for the data. So nobody else can have access to that data. That's strictly owned by the police department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Cornell.
Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas, did you? Maybe I dismissed too soon. I didn't see your hand.
That's okay.
No, not for you.
Not for me? Okay. I'll be here.
I'm not sure what's happening on here. I just say yes.
I'm just waiting to see if there's other comments from the commissioners before I make a motion.
Commissioner Collo.
I'm not ready to make a motion, but I would, if anyone does make a motion, I hope it would include, as discussed before and now at the table, adding language to the contract that would include security of the data.
Or at least getting that clarification among counsel. Commissioner Douglas?
Okay, I'm going to move approval of the contract with the provision that our city attorney update. Mr. Grotowski, what was the section?
5.3.
5.?
Possibly 5.3.
5. Potentially 5.3 to absolutely certify that data is only accessed by law enforcement agencies.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, so I didn't have any questions for either of the two. I think the presentation is great. I understand what it does, and it seems like they've put safeguards in place. This is something that's been going on. I understand that. But there was really nothing that could make me be a BS vote on this contract. I just, just the entire concept of adding this additional surveillance where the gatekeeper is the same person who is able to access it, which is the police department in general. I just don't feel comfortable with that addition to our repertoire. And so I was going to be a no vote regardless on this. So that's why I had no questions, but I'm still a no.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dubb?
I appreciate the concern on principle. I think in our conversations with the department, understanding the checks and balances in place, understanding how the technology is deployed, that it's been utilized in thousands of other communities across the country with well-established case law and how the data can be used and accessed and what the rights of citizens are, that it's only recording license plates on public roadways and not intruding into private spaces. And the tremendous asset it could be to the police department. In a world where we're all walking around with a listening device and a camera and a GPS tracker on us, I have a hard time making the argument to deny, you know, an extra set of eyes just on our public roadways when a crime is committed trying to identify where that suspect fled. I think it's reasonable. I understand the concern, but I think this is a good tool that's going to do far more good than it could possibly do harm in our community. So I'm happy to support.
Mr. Hunt, sorry.
I, too, I appreciate Commissioner Macy's concerns, but I do believe this is an additional tool, a good tool, that we can utilize to help keep residents of Royal Oak safe and that the police department can use in solving whatever crimes or keeping an eye out for particular cars, Amber Alerts, things of that nature. And because so many of our neighboring communities utilize this type of service or these cameras, chances are anytime we drive, we're already on camera somewhere anyways. So I think being in line with our neighboring communities just continues to make us that much safer, so I would support this.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
You're just not getting me to respond to those comments just because. So yes, we have listening devices and recording devices on us all the time, but they can be accessed by police departments, whereas this is something that could be. And if, yes, it's deployed all around the country, but also places that they've done audits, they've shown a certain percentage of improper usage of these. So it's certainly not a fail-safe system they have in place. And yes, all the communities around us have that, but that is part of actually, why do we need it here, like in the middle of this? And it's creating this global network of cameras. Maybe I've seen Terminator one too many times. I'm just saying. It's there for the robot overlords if they look for it. So yes, I understand what makes this feel like it's acceptable, but to me, it still is not.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yep, just to speak to that, yep. The data on our phones, collected by every app, our every movement, is not accessible to law enforcement without a warrant, but it is accessible to profiteers and people that make money off that data. I find it odd that we would deny that data to the people whose sole purpose is to prevent crime and keep us safe. And it's not even a fraction of the data that we willfully give to have food delivered to our homes. Again, this is just surveillance of public streets and license plates driving in public streets to be accessed only in investigation of a known crime. So again, I think it's a technology that's not new and certainly not the creation of a surveillance society anywhere near what we've already imposed on ourselves willfully.
No, I'll just add, you know, I think what everyone has set up here is actually all correct. And just like any tool out there, tool is only as good as how it's used or misused. And I have the highest confidence in our accredited police department along with the right checks and balances, audits, protocols that will make it a near-zero risk for abuse. But I also believe, too, our police chief and any other police personnel that are listening to this also understand our concerns of potential misuse, although it's very unlikely, that they'll be extra vigilant in those protocols and in those processes and in those checks and in those audits like they do in other areas to be accredited to make sure that, you know, we maintain the high level of trust that we have as a city and as a police department. So I have the confidence. You know, I'm not dismissing Commissioner Macy's thoughts in any way whatsoever. I'm just weigh them against the confidence I have in the protocols and policies and systems that are in place within our PD. And so I'll be supporting this contract. And I will say, just from a complete financial point of view, and I appreciate City Attorney Grotowski because we have terms in here that are somewhat acceptable in terms of, one, the price, it seems like it's a great value. And number two, there's not a lot of sticky claws in this contract. And so we made sure we looked and identified to see if there was any poison pills, sticky claws, post options. And it's a pretty, you know, straightforward contract that, you know, puts the city in a good position in the event we decide that it's not right for us a couple of years from now, whatever it may be. So. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. I won't make the no show sign. All right. Okay, that brings us to item 10, which is approval of Royal Oak Community Opportunity Fund Grants.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. I am pleased tonight to recommend the award of nine Royal Oak Community Opportunity Fund Grants to local nonprofits. This was a program established by the City Commission and its ARPA allocation plan, and it seeks to provide much-needed funding to organizations that have and are currently serving a critical role in supporting the Royal Oak community. Altogether, the city received 13 applications, and I'm putting an asterisk over my letter because there was a very last-minute application that we were not able to review in time, but will be recommending for approval at the next meeting. The nine being recommended for funding tonight totaled $278,000. The primary lens through which we judge these applications were the role that each local nonprofit played in supporting the Royal Oak community and enhancing quality of life and increasing public access to resources. While applicants were not required to be located within the city, those that are receive priority. And pursuant to the community engagement that we conducted through ARPA, organizations providing programming to support mental health concerns for youth and the general public were prioritized, as were organizations supporting those with food or shelter insecurities. And so with that background in mind, I'll walk you through the nine grants that we are recommending for approval tonight. The first is Gilda's Club, which provides social and emotional support services for those impacted by cancer, including the underserved. With this funding, Gilda's Club looks to increase youth support services whose families are affected by cancer and to increase bereavement support group offerings for families coping with cancer diagnosis and loss. An estimated 900 Royal Oak residents may benefit from this funding and that project. The second recommended award is the South Oakland Citizens for the Homeless. It operates the Welcome Inn in Royal Oak, which anticipates serving approximately 200 individuals with this funding. Its proposed project will expand multi-location emergency winter shelter systems and increase the days of operation and provide sustainability services for recently housed guests. Third recommended grant award is the Metro Detroit Youth Club, which many of you know, it's been operating in Royal Oak since 1958, and their current activities are based on the Jack and Patty Salter Center. The mission of the Metro Detroit Youth Club is to empower youth to reach their full potential through safe, accessible, and inclusive experiences that open doors to a bright future. This grant award will fund a special needs youth evaluation program to expand capacity to serve additional special needs youth ages six through 18 in partnership with Michigan State University. The next recommended grant, the Royal Oak Youth Assistance. They aim to reduce the incidence of youth delinquency, abuse, and neglect through community involvement. Its second step program is currently in two of six elementary schools, and it creates positive systematic change that builds safe learning environments and addresses the needs of children, educators, and communities. This grant award would expand that program to all six elementary schools. Next, Blessings in a Backpack. This program provides school-aged children who are experiencing food insecurity with a bag that contains enough food to provide six meals over the course of a weekend. As you all know, with the rise in overall food costs, the 2019 allocation of $100 per child has risen now to $145. So this grant funding will meet student needs with that rise in cost of food and allow for the purchase of additional provisions. Next, the Royal Oak Historical Society, which is dedicated to preserving local heritage through education and community engagement. Being a good steward of Royal Oak stories, artifacts, and traditions, it relies on face-to-face engagement to collect, display, and share the city's rich history. Awarded funds will go to further its mission, allow for more speaking and educational engagements, and the purchase and creation of new visual aids and improved spaces for those purposes. The World War II Legacy Memorial, as we had talked a little bit about earlier today, that was established to honor Michigan's legacy of ingenuity, sacrifice, and commitment on both the war and home front. This grant funding will be used to enhance educational programming and veteran outreach. Teen Clean Closet. They provide hygiene items and distributes them to those in need in the Royal Oak community through a series of closets on a no questions asked basis. The pandemic dramatically increased the requests and rate of the services it provides, so grant funding will be used for the purchase of additional projects to be distributed between six community closets. And finally, the Suburban Hockey Foundation promotes youth mental and physical health through ice sports. The program focuses on building confidence and making friends, fitness, and personal growth both on and off ice. This grant award would enable the Suburban Hockey Foundation to continue to assist families with the organization that are in need. So as mentioned earlier, a 10th grant recipient will be recommended at the next City Commission meeting. This award will exceed the $300,000 allocated for the overall grant program, and we will recommend covering what will be a $14,000 difference with additional ARPA funding. And again, I apologize for this deviation from the official letter that I submitted this evening. And so with that, I can entertain any questions you may have. I also know that some of the proposed grant recipients are in the audience as well.
Questions for Mr. Fenton? Commissioner Dubb?
Not a question, just thank you, Mr. Fenton, for bringing this forward. In our long conversations we've had about how to distribute these dollars, we did prioritize wanting to provide some relief and support for these core institutions in our community. So thank you to you and anyone else on staff to help, you know, reach out to these organizations and bring this recommendation forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I mean, this list is such a bedrock of our community, right? Like, these are people who are out there constantly making sure that we're taking care of those most in need, that we're keeping, you know, remembrance of our history. We're taking care of our youth. I mean, there's so many youth things on this. It's underserved children are the hallmark of what we're seeing here. So I just want to thank staff for going through this. When thinking about spending ARPA funds, I can't think of a better way than directly having positive impact on people who are underserved. So thank you. You know, we have a full house here tonight of a lot of volunteers who put hundreds of thousands of hours in to helping people every year. So thank you all for being here, and I'm excited that we have this before us.
Commissioner Dubb?
Unless anyone's going to jump in. Two last one, we're giving it to you. Sure. So my day job is, you know, with the regional nonprofit, and we have a very clear view to what demand has looked like during COVID. In the wake of COVID, resources are strained, you know, and people need more. And the American Rescue Plan Act was designed to reinvigorate our communities and our households and our bedrock institutions in the wake of, you know, all the strain caused by the pandemic. So one, thank you all that are here that represent these organizations. Extremely familiar with all of them. You all do amazing work, you know, protecting our community and our culture and providing emergency services and improving quality of life, you know, across the board for those in need. So really pleased that we can bring this forward, and I'm happy to move for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Dubb, seconded by Commissioner Collo. All right, Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I serve ex-official on the Board of Royal Oak Youth Assistance. And we, for a number of months now, have been trying to figure out a way to extend the very, the well-regarded and very effective second step program to all of the elementary schools here in Royal Oak. And I'm just thrilled that we're now going to be able to do this. And I'm just going to ask everybody from Youth Assistance, raise your hands. Awesome, thanks for coming tonight. Good job.
Yeah, I'll just add to what's already been said. Thank you to staff for helping organize and finding the channels here. And a real big thank you to all the organizations that are out there working day and night with a pulse on the community to fulfill the gaps and needs that many, many people depend on. I can tell you, we're all familiar with these organizations. We know the work that you've done. I personally have visited and talked to the leaders of these organizations, but I can tell you, you know, without getting into specific details, I know of personal friends and individuals in this community that have been direct, I'll say beneficiaries of the work that you do and have avoided and averted crisis in their lives because of the work that you do. And it's not just a vision statement, it's not just a dollar symbol, it's not just the great presence we have here tonight, it's the outcomes that are most important. And I personally can testify that I have seen the work that you've done collectively and individually change the lives of people. And we're so grateful for your work, and we hope this will help you continue some of that work as we move forward as a community, and thank you. All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, very good.
There's no big shocks.
All right, that brings us to item 11, which is approval of the Mutual Non-Disclosure and Exclusivity Agreement with the YMCA of Metropolitan Detroit. Mr. Fenton? Mr. Fenton?
Thank you again, Mayor Forney, members of the City Commission. So in August 2021, the City Commission unanimously approved a memorandum of understanding with the YMCA of Metro Detroit to determine partnership opportunities for a new YMCA community center in Royal Oak, as the current South Oakland Family YMCA facility on 11 Mile Road is nearing the end of its useful life. Pursuant to that MOU, the city and the YMCA have been working diligently together to identify a location in the city for that center, along with some very preliminary discussions about how to fund and finance that facility, and what the programming, maintenance, and operation of that would look like. Site selection generally being the first step in the development process, the request tonight from the YMCA is for a period of one year to conduct an exclusive development investigation process at the city's surface parking lot located at 600 South Main Street. I will stress that this project is in the very early stages of due diligence. What they are envisioning today may not be what this project becomes, but as of today, they have discussed the construction of a three-story community center with parking on site. The building would include an aquatic hall, gymnasium, multipurpose rooms, a fitness center, and a licensed childcare facility. Floors four and above, and we don't know how many floors are above floor four, would contain housing including affordable units. During the proposed one-year exclusivity period, the YMCA will work with the city to create a development and purchase agreement and to outline the financing for the project. The city itself will be conducting its due diligence in terms of what detriment to our parking system developing this lot may incur. So we have a concept, but the work we put in over the next year will determine if we have an actual project that works for all of the parties involved. So at this point, I can answer any questions that you have. We also have an attendance with a short presentation from the YMCA, Letitia McCree-Thomas, the Senior Vice President of Communications and Marketing with the Y, and Gail Von Staden, the Vice Board Chair for the YMCA of Metro Detroit.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be present for the continued discussion about the partnership of the City of Royal Oak and the YMCA of Metropolitan Detroit and its South Oakland branch. Joining me this evening are our association's current Board Chair, Eric Hoffman, the South Oakland Branch Executive Director, Trish Hansuk, Letitia McCree, Senior Vice President of Marketing and Communications, who you will hear from in a little bit, Senior Vice President of Properties and Purchasing, Lori Oranga, and Senior VP of Operations and Membership, Kyle Anderson. We have a great team. And my name is Gail Von Staden, I'm the Vice Chair of the Board. The Y is a fixture in many communities, including Royal Oak, with our facility on 11 Mile Road. You may think of us as the place where you learned to swim, or where your kids played T-ball or soccer. To introduce you to our values and mission, I'd like to introduce Letitia, and she's going to tell you a little bit about our mission and our programs, and then I'll speak a little bit about our envisioned project.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. You can, actually, these development slides will roll through because you guys heard about this, so we can just go directly to the South Oakland Family YMCA, quick fact impact. First of all, I just want you to know, the YMCA of Metropolitan Detroit has been in the city of Royal Oak for over 76 years, 73 in the building that we are in today. This currently, this YMCA serves over 5,000 members in this community. We provide over 1,100 seniors ages 60 and older with the opportunity to exercise and socialize. We provide over 1,100 school-aged children with essential educational and youth development skills. We employ over 61 area residents and team members, provide over 245 families with memberships at 67% reduction, so they only pay 33% of the cost of membership. We operate the only indoor community pool in Royal Oak, and we provide essential health and wellness service for over 100 cancer survivors, provide 45 group exercise classes for all ages, and we operate summer day camp for over 350 kids. Now, have you ever been to our summer camp? There are over 100 children on our site every single day all week long, and it's the most amazing experience that you can have. To see those bright, young minds, we are investing in, helping them with academic achievement because there are studies that show that young people involved in these kinds of programs perform better when they go back to school. We operate a positive play program where we serve over 6,000 children in our community, and we also distribute over 100,000 meals. And during the pandemic, one of the things, and Tricia can attest to this, we had a drive-through food program where families were literally driving through the YMCA and picking up food, three days of food at a time, and they could come multiple times during the week. And also, we provide over 2,000 free child watch hours to our members. We also have family memberships for people who have earned less than $50,000 a year. It's $40 a month for the entire family. What can you do with an entire family every day for $40? You can come swim at the Y, you can have someone watch your child at the Y, your child and you can participate in activities. Come to the Y any day of the week, and you'll see a vibrant epicenter. We know, I'm not going to get into the location, that's for you guys to decide, but I can tell you, we are a value to this community, and if we get a better, we just spent almost a million dollars upgrading the facility where we are today because we believe in this community, but it's not going to be sufficient. We need a better space so that we can do a bigger, better job, because being in this community is going to allow us to serve more residents, and we are so excited to be a value and a staple, just like those wonderful organizations that are here today that we're serving children. The YMCA is amazing because cradle to career through your retirement years, we're here. Thank you.
Thanks, Letitia. Detroit's first YMCA was founded in 1852. Just seven years earlier, one of Royal Oak's founders, Orson Starr, built his home at Maine and 13 Mile. Royal Oak's development over the course of its history has been rooted by community institutions, the First Methodist Church in 1838, the Baptist Church in 1839, the Lions Club in 1828. While cities change and evolve, these community institutions serve as cornerstones for the people and businesses of the city. As the YMCA of Metropolitan Detroit's Vice Chairperson and a homeowner in the downtown district, and a business owner in the downtown district, I personally welcome the opportunity to help see to fruition a new cornerstone for our city in this 21st century, a community center resource that is reimagined, not as a far-flung building at the end of a street surrounded by parking lots, but a building integrally designed into the urban fabric of Royal Oak. A building that can house not only the functions of a new community center, a gymnasium, a pool, meeting rooms, fitness spaces, but a center that integrates parking, childcare, and housing alongside the community center that meets the diverse needs of our community. The operations of the YMCA are entirely funded by membership dues. Yesterday's model of the standalone YMCA, supported by folks coming to get in an exercise class or swim laps in the pool, simply doesn't work anymore. A mixed-use model of development, where the Y can be integrated into a larger development, ensures long-term viability for the institution and provides a richness to the experience of tenants and neighbors alike, a well-knit assembly of community-serving assets that enrich and beautify our downtown. Across the continent, there are great examples of this to learn from. In Nashville, Tennessee, the old downtown YMCA is being reimagined as the base of a residential tower. In Toronto, an old water processing plant in the heart of the city is being re-envisioned. Waterworks combines food-focused retail, a fully-service YMCA with extensive social facilities dedicated to health and wellness, a mid-rise condominium with family-oriented dwellings, including affordable housing. We are proposing a mixed-use building with the Y being housed on the first and second levels, a licensed childcare facility, onsite parking, and multi-story residential units above. To that end, we have engaged an architect intimately familiar with this paradigm of building, Diamond Schmidt, the architect of Waterworks in Toronto. Their experience in Michigan can be seen at the Max S. and Marjorie M. Fisher Music Hall and Weiser Hall on the University of Michigan's Ann Arbor campus. They have successfully delivered some of the most compelling mixed-use buildings that integrate YMCA's, and their work stands the test of time. We have engaged them to provide conceptual design to help us understand the opportunities on this site. The location being considered for this project is in many ways a gateway to the city. By locating Royal Oak YMCA's communities, the Royal Oak YMCA Community Center at 600 South Main Royal Oak is solidifying the mission, providing great services to the citizens of Royal Oak in the heart of Royal Oak. The development of this center squarely aligns with the recommendations of the Royal Oak Recreation Master Plan, including addressing equity of access to all peoples, broadening the offerings to Royal Oak's aging populations, as well as its young families, teens, and working professionals. The YMCA is a place for all people, and its reputation for inclusivity, opportunity, and engagement will make the downtown even more vibrant. And I'm happy to take questions.
Very great presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll open it up to questions. Any questions? Commissioner Duba.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd say thank you for the presentation. I think it's a concept worth exploring. I'm sure we're going to have lots of questions as we start, you know, digging in on this together. But right now, I'm really excited about what's possible.
Great. As are we.
Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Ms. Van Staden. What will happen to the building on 11 Mile?
The building on 11 Mile will be seen as an asset that we can contribute to the cap stack. The biggest challenge of this project will be to determine its funding sources. So we see the property that we own on 11 Mile as being integral to the determination of that capital stack and the funding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, another question.
Sure.
So, and I would just say, as we move forward in this public-private partnership, of course, we are going to want to see how the people over the residents of Royal Oak will benefit from this. Beyond the opportunity to purchase a membership, obviously, that's going to be the thing that will affect people's perception of this.
Yep.
And then the third thing that I want to make sure of is that this building will not, will pay property taxes, because taking a site this size and turning it into a nonprofit development completely defeats the purpose of our economic development programs. So those would be my three issues.
Yep. And I'll address the last two.
Great.
So the, the, there is an example that we are engaged with the city of Southgate. And we are, operate, we operate the City of Southgate YMCA, Downriver YMCA, and in that case, the city provided the funding for the, for the construction of the facility, and in turn, the YMCA provided discounted memberships to all residents of Southgate. And something, there are models throughout, so we have a direct experience with such a model, and there are other models that we can reference in the ecosystem of the YMCA's. And, I'm sorry.
Property tax.
Property taxes. The, the, one of the strengths of developments such as this is that the YMCA is able to, we don't know what the makeup of what, of how we would either own or rent, or how, what the ownership makeup would be within the building, the developed mixed-use building itself. But the advantage of integrating residential units into it is, of course, that it would become a revenue-generating piece of property for the city. Because those residents, of course, would become taxable. So it's not as though we would be taking a single property and it would remain off the books.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll just remark and underscore, great presentation, very exciting. I remember, it doesn't seem that long ago where we kind of sat down and had a little bit of a brainstorm.
Yeah.
And now we're moving, and really in a great way, from ambition to innovation. And I think this next phase we're entering is going to be very innovative. As we get questions, as we get ideas, as we identify problems, as we identify opportunities to even serve the community more and bring these assets that we all want, how do we do it? And, you know, just having the opportunity and privilege of meeting the folks at the YMCA, everyone I've come in contact with, you know, I just feel like we have the horsepower there, along with our outstanding city staff led up by, by Mr. Fenton, that, you know, there's definitely a will, which means there's a way. And, you know, we've gone, and we're feeding that ambition with each other, and now let's get to the innovation side and figure out innovating, how to finance it, innovating, all these different things, not just, you know, how cool the building will look, but there's a lot of other factors. But I think we're very blessed and fortunate to have a broad team here to help us figure it out together if, I assume, if all of this passes. But, I mean, this is a big deal, a big dream, and it's going to take a big effort.
Yes.
And some great innovation. I'm excited that we get to work together on this, hopefully.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So like, as I said, up here, this is a great opportunity for the city. I'm excited to see what the next year might bring. This is just a year to figure out how we might go about this. There's a lot of unknowns. I definitely hope to see the residents getting a discount, and there's definitely going to be benefits to the residents, there's going to be benefits to the Y, there's potential benefits to all the new people that we bring in also. I mean, this is a real win-win for the city, something that's been a high priority, to redevelop this and give us more public spaces, a recreation, a true recreation environment in the city, so I'm excited for that. So with that, I move approval, the agreement.
We have a motion by Commissioner Collo. Is there a, second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion. Commissioner Duba.
Thank you, Mayor. For Mr. Fenton, just to clarify, what is the benefit of the exclusivity?
The benefit is chiefly for the YMCA as they're working with developers or different financial institutions, and they represent that this is a true partnership between the city of Royal Oak and the YMCA, and so they're not going quote-unquote rogue. We are allowing them to represent themselves as a partner with us on this project. It is a year. If more time is needed, and that does happen on many projects, like the one we're sitting in right now, that is solely up to your approval as well. So, you know, a lot of moving parts, but I would agree with the comments that I heard today. I think it's definitely a big swing worth taking.
And basically, this means that we're at a point where we're able to explore in earnest, but that requires resources, and no one's going to invest those resources if we're looking at selling the property out from under them.
And our end to say again, it precludes us from entertaining different proposals for that site.
Which is a rational step to take at this phase of the conversation. I want to make sure that's clear.
I agree.
It does not oblige us anything other than giving us this year to explore.
It, this project in particular, and it had been said earlier, checks so many strategic priorities that the City Commission has, that we get a lot of requests for, we would like to work on this piece of property or not. There hasn't been one that checks as many boxes as what the YMCA has proposed, and so we've been working very, very closely with the Y over the last year and a half. It just took to this point to identify a site where they agreed that this was in their best interests, and we were comfortable with entertaining that exclusivity.
Awesome. Thank you. You know, it's the second to last meeting, so I will not be here at the table exploring this with you all, but I think it is a very exciting opportunity to check a lot of boxes. I do not think we should not explore very exciting ideas because we're worried about parking capacity at this point in a conversation. It's disheartening to hear absolute no when we're just talking about the capital, let's have a conversation. I'm sure the residents of Royal Oak are interested in the conversation, would like us to explore it before making a decision without any information. So, yeah, excited to see this move forward, and, you know, wish you all luck in exploring it.
Yeah. And just on that parking comment, I agree, and I think that, you know, it's a question, we don't need to get ahead of ourselves because you can equally offset that concern by asking any small business if you could bring- if you could bring 5,000 Royal Oak families to the heart of downtown weekly or many times a week. That's really good for business. So, you know, we have to figure all that out in the design and accommodation, but it's not something that should at all, in any way, even in the smallest way, restrain or constrain our thought and innovation here because it's such a huge win if we, as a collective team and as a community, can pull something like this off. So very, very initial, early stages, but I like how, I think Mr. Fenton said, like, you know, it's, you got to take a big swing. It checks so many boxes, you got to, you got to take a shot.
All right. Anybody else? Should I call for the vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you. And this sort of brings us to part B of this discussion, which is approval of the YMCA of Metropolitan Detroit's request for soft-cost funding. Mr. Fenton.
Yes, thank you again. Concurrent to the request for exclusivity at 600 South Main, the YMCA also requested $25,000 in match funding to begin schematic design of what this concept would look like. So we'll be putting in $25,000. They will be matching that with $25,000. I believe that this is a reasonable request. We did earmark $1.5 million from our American Rescue Plan Act allocation for this project. Should it move forward? I, soft-cost capital stack for me at this point. Anything that we can do to push the ball forward, let's do it. I think it's a reasonable request, and if you have any other questions about it, I can answer those right now.
Any questions for Mr. Fenton? Commissioner Macy.
Do you think there will be other requests from this 1.5, like, over the next course of this development? Or do you think, like, this is sort of it for the pre, we're-going phase?
My opinion is, I don't like to drip, drip, drip these sorts of things. And so in our due diligence with the YMCA, we'll determine if there's any other future expenditures. This is really to get this off the ground, get them going, start bringing ideas back to the city, start bringing some of the challenges that this project would present to the city, not only in terms of parking, but I had an earlier update on the animal shelter, working through the entitlement process there, and it can add more money to it. So if we get to the point where we believe we have to make future asks off of that original earmark, I would rather try to have a comprehensive request and not some here, some there, if you understand where I'm coming from.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, it makes sense to me, especially when two parties have to rely on each other to really think and innovate. I think it's important that both parties have skin in the game, a little bit of skin, just to keep everybody, you know, and especially outside parties that are interested in getting involved to know the seriousness that people are committed. And, you know, it's going to be, you know, a heavy lift here, a lot of discussion, a lot of questions, a lot of problems, a lot of, hopefully not entitlements, and things of that nature. And I think conveying to all of those subsidiaries, third parties, or whatever, that, you know, might partake in the conversation, if that's part of the solution, knowing that the two primary parties have a little skin in the game, I think makes things work better, faster, and provides more confidence to get things done more expeditiously. So, my opinion. I can say I've been around now for a while. I looked at how long I've been professionally employed, and I'm no longer the youngest person in the workplace, believe it or not. It's crazy. So I've seen things fall apart, and I've seen things come together, and having skin in the game matters. So I'll be supporting any motion that relates to this if somebody so desires to make one.
Commissioner Macy.
Move approval.
The motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubb. All right, discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to the second-to-last item on tonight's agenda, which is approval of contract award South Lafayette parking structure repairs. And thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. I appreciate it, really do. We'll give a second for the room to clear. All right, Mr. Filipski and Mr. Exley. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Fournier, City Commissioners. The item before you tonight is a request to approve the award for some contractual work at the South Lafayette parking structure, specifically some joint ceiling work that needs to occur there. And so, rather simple item. We've bid this out, and we're making a recommendation for just north of $47,000 to have this work completed. I'll note that, as you all are well aware too, there's a number of issues at these parking structures. And I guess the way we're kind of eating that elephant is sort of one bite at a time, this being the critical first step, namely because the failures with the joints here have contributed to some of the lighting issues that we're seeing. So just so you know, that's next on deck. That will, Mr. Exley's working on finishing up that bid specification. That will be before you soon as well. And so without any other questions, I'll request approval.
Questions for Mr. Filipski, preferably really hard and complicated ones. Mr. Douglas?
No, actually, I, not a question, but I'm glad you mentioned the issue of lighting. I had an email within the past few days from a citizen asking about what we were going to do with the lighting in that structure. So I'm glad to hear you're proactively addressing that. Thank you.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Clearly, repairs are needed. Does, do you know what the funding source is for these repairs?
Yeah, these were actually included in the capital improvement plan, which was approved by City Commission, so that was the original funding source. But as you know, there was the Congressional earmark grant that was covering both this and the lighting and some additional work as well.
So this is coming out of the Congressional earmark?
Yep, that's just in the process of being finalized. So the check isn't in the mail yet on that.
Gotcha. They're about to go homes. You better get that fast.
Just the mayor, if I may clarify, this is coming from the state of Michigan.
Yeah, $600,000 we received.
Yes, sorry.
We don't want to give Congress any.
They don't deserve work.
Although Friday may pass and the check may not clear, so I'm glad it's from the state.
That's true.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Commissioner Hunt.
I see that Ram Construction is the lowest bidder on this, but you do believe that they, not just, they weren't chosen just as the lowest bidder. They are the most qualified for this project.
Did it have a conversation with the director? He was confident in that, and I'll let him speak to that further.
Yes, we've had Ram do some other emergency repairs in that same structure, and they're well-known. They do a lot of this work throughout Metro Detroit. Same with Pullman and Smith's Waterproofing. All three of them are very qualified candidates. It's just Ram was the lowest.
Okay, but you've worked with them in the past? Or they've worked with the city in the past?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Macy.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get some repair work done.